Over one if you want.
Oh, isn't Gina here?
No, she's coming later.
We're gonna start without her. She can't vote on the minutes.
Do you want me to switch places?
No, you're fine.
No, she's coming.
She'll be going back.
All right, we're all set. It is Tuesday, October 9th about 7:15, 7:12 PM. I'd like to open the business meeting for the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk and another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. And this meeting is being taped recorded for the purposes of taking minutes. I'd just like to, for the record, say that Jeff Moore will be the acting chairman because Shawn Dean is traveling out of town tonight. So, the first order of business is a finance update, so Patty, you wanna guide us through that?
Okay, I gave you the fiscal '19 revolving account, first two pages. And I put on the third page, I gave you the end of fiscal '18, so, because we were up so much, I didn't want you to think, "Oh, what happened?" So, this is only from July 1st till now. So, we spent a little more than we took in, but if you look at fiscal '18, we gained 2,007, 66, 12, and that hasn't happened since 2014. That's another year where we had a lot of.
Okay.
There was a deposit.
We had some long hearings, too, so that makes, it's actually pretty good.
And we had a deposit for tonight's hearing for 25 Ball Pate and a deposit for 34 Pillsbury Lane, which took on for November 13th, and then some revolving hours.
Anybody have any questions about the finance report?
Minutes.
So, we need a motion to approve the business and hearing minutes of September 11th, 2018. Everybody have this opportunity to review those?
Still moved? Second?
Paul, thank you, Dave. Is there any discussion on that?
Nope.
None?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
I was here, right? Yeah.
And we're all on that hearing, right? So, Shawn is not here for that.
Okay, I have.
Gina is absent.
So, I have Mellow. I'm good.
Yep, you have four of us.
Yeah, four. Okay, so I put the times to do the 2019 calendar. So, I inserted color copies. Might be a little light.
It's fine.
So, January, I obviously didn't do the first, because it's New Year's Day, so I did the eighth. I posted the first couple here. February 5th, March 5th, April 2nd. Every, we got every first Tuesday like we normally do through to July, as usual, it's July and the September and November. So, July 4th is a Thursday, and that's kinda tricky, because, I mean, some of you might take off the following and some might take the beginning, so I, I'm thinking the ninth. And we can always change that.
I think the ninth made sense, it's what we usually do.
Yeah.
We can always change this later if anybody.
Yeah, it's, it's far down.
It's getting pretty close to my birthday in July.
It is. Start early.
It's like, yeah, it's like two weeks before my birthday.
Do you wanna move to Labor Day one, too?
Well, that's next. And then, so I got August 6th. Sorry, I got Jeff's name in there, because you're usually not here. And September, the day after Labor Day has, has been okay for the last, every, every year we've done it. So, I don't know if you wanna leave it or move that.
I would move it to the town.
It just moves it, it's only two weeks to October 1st.
Oh, I see what you mean.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, but October's a five week.
If we move it to the 10th, there's, there's only two weeks in between, and that's gonna...
You could do, you could do 10 and 8.
It'll mess up the legal ads a lot, because it's only two weeks, and you need two weeks, you gotta wait 14 days before you can publish a legal ad before the hearing date. Then you need it to run two consecutive weeks, so there's not even enough time to run a legal ad in that timeframe.
So then, move that and then move the October to the 8th, and then you have plenty of time.
And then, yeah, but then with Thanksgiving week, the, oh, that's not Thanksgiving.
Oh, it's fine.
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Now, we've generally been the first Tuesday, there's no reason why we can't change those, too. We did that this year because of the way the calendar felt. We kept three, like Dave's saying.
And we're gonna have to...
We did the second Tuesday for three in a row to keep the distances between the hearings somewhat steady.
So, you wanna go to, do you wanna move September?
If, I think, I think the day after, you know, the 10th would be probably more convenient for people, if they're heading back to school and doing whatever else they're doing on the 3rd, it's kind of a lot.
Okay.
I would maybe leave October the way it is for now, and we can address it later. Any of these can be changed. I mean, you're, really, you're posting the first three now, right?
Yeah.
The first quarter.
Well, I'll do, I'll do the June, because I wanna save that room, you know, you wanna save the room.
What are the rules again? You can't publish it.
So, for example, for November 13th, okay, you can advertise, you have to count 14 days back into, so the 13th, so the 13th, you don't count the day of the hearing, so you count 12 days back, so it goes into October, and then it runs for two consecutive weeks. And then the legal ad deadline is the week before it publishes.
So, the rule is you can't publish it more than 14 days.
You basically need a month.
The first ad can't publish more.
More than 14 days before the meeting. And then it needs to run for two weeks.
And then it runs for two consecutive weeks, and then the deadline is the week before for the Georgetown Record, is Thursday at noon for the Friday following publish, so that's why you meet once a month.
That's why we're such a girl bureaucracy.
I mean, we could, we could use, if it, if it came down to it, and there was something that happened, you can use the new report daily.
It's totally fine. I was just trying to understand.
I like Dave's idea, if you take the October 8th, move the 1st to the 8th, then you've got four weeks between all the rest of the hearings for that year.
Yeah, so why wait?
It goes 10 plus four weeks is the 8th, plus four weeks is the 5th, plus four weeks is the 3rd of December.
Yeah, and because it all starts when you go to July and you take out that first week, you kinda have to bump from there.
Okay, and there's no elections in November, so we can leave November there.
Yep.
Is that reasonable for now? We can always change it later, there's no...
Yeah. Now, we're at September 10th, October 8th, right?
Yeah, there's no guarantee we even have a full meeting or something, too.
Exactly, maybe several people have travel schedules, and all of a sudden you gotta change it again.
Yeah.
We can do it.
Okay, so no elections in November.
Hmm.
We need to make a motion on that?
The one goes off of the following.
No.
Huh? Goes for you to keep.
But we don't need a motion or anything.
Nope. Okay.
Other, new business?
Yes, I have scheduled for the next correspondence, actually. Nothing, nothing else new, sorry. Is a denial letter from Les for 34 Pillsbury Lane. This is for In Ground Pool using the 165, 10.1, the 50% close to the side of the lot line. It's, it's fairly simple, they're just going a little closer. And then there's the notice under that, and then there's a denial letter from Les for the termination on this 99 Central Street, which is a odd kind of thing, but they're changing it. They're not gonna do this. They're not gonna do the single family.
So, there will not be November 13th, they're gonna be...
Yeah, they're, he's, from what I understand, the representative for the people that own the property are gonna change it, and it'll probably end up being two, two buildings on a, more than one building on a lot, but not a single family and an apartment house. They're not gonna do that. So, this'll get revised.
Okay.
So, they're doing that now.
I see on the correspondence, you have a use schedule update?
Yes, and I, it's, it's separate. Do you have it? It's, I didn't...
Side of order.
Yeah.
At the end, got it.
There it is.
Thank you.
So, we're skipping down to correspondence, and there's a, there's a clip inside your agenda, something that's clipped together, that's an updated use schedule that goes in, just put that in your 165 zoning book. So, I had, we had a bunch of revisions that go back to 2015, where they moved things around. For example, they moved other uses, other uses into business and rural, and then at town meeting, it was fiscal '15, the housing for the elderly was deleted, because they have, they have that in the planning, it's in a separate bylaw, so. And that's just mock draft, because in the last page, they couldn't find the amendment number when I got this, on the next to the last page. Doesn't affect anything, it's just the amendment number is missing, so it's mock draft. Just stick that in your bylaw book.
Done.
Then I have got an email from Citizens Planner Training Collaborative for the Fall The ones that I, I, that are, well, down the cape again, is the bottom, 19 and 20. 19 is introduction to the zoning act, and that's KP actually doing it in Newburyport. That's a, that's the closest one. The next one is special permits and variances, and that's in Chelsey. So, if anybody's interested...
20 is worth, definitely worth a try, if anybody hasn't been. I might mention it to Shawn, I think, I don't think he went through that one. He, he wanted to do that one last year, and it wasn't.
Yeah.
He either wasn't able to do it, or it was really far away.
I think the last one was 2013, last time. I think that's the one we went to.
Yeah, I think so.
If you wanna let, just, and I can talk to Shawn, let me know, and you have to, if I register you online, we need an invoice before I could send them a check, because it asks you pay by check or debit card, so.
Okay.
So, if you can let me know if anybody wants to take any of those, and it gives a description of the classes, and I sent you the email, and if you click on the link that says Fall Workshops, it gives you a more detailed description than what's here.
So, if anybody wants to attend any of those, just contact Patty.
Yeah, as soon as you can.
So, the next item, any other correspondence, Patty?
Nope.
I guess the thing from Janet is actually under Old Business. So, we'll put it, we'll leave it under there. So, we, we have a new application under Old Business, right?
Yep, and I didn't write your names on these, because I put, "Please recycle." So, if you can, when you come to the next meeting, give me the envelopes back. So, I stuck a, I don't know how much paper I'm saving, I'm saving envelopes, but I still had to use a sticky to tape on that.
There you go. Who needs one, Dave?
So, that's for, we each get one.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get Dave and Shawn yours. And then...
So, we had talked about communications and getting general information out to the public last time, and talked about how somebody on this board might wanna sort of spearhead making sure people got the information, current information about what's going on with the board and so on, and we were trying to figure out how to, how to do that, if it could be done and so on and so forth. Turns out that Patty brought it up with Janet, and all you gotta do is send any link we want to the news@georgetownmass.gov site, and it'll go out to the Facebook page. Nice, because I think, I don't wanna care for that, I think, Dave, you were involved in this conversation, I think we brought up the fact that somebody would have to post it, but then you don't wanna be replying, because we're members of the board, and you don't wanna get in any back and forth, but, so this makes it easier. It's on the last page, that's, that's the link, so...
Agendas on notices.
Right, so I think it makes it very easy that any agenda and any, any notice that you have ought to be sent, when you post it on our site, it ought to also go to that link, and at least now it's out on social media, where people might follow that page, and if anybody's interested in knowing what's going on with the zoning board, we can refer them to that Facebook page, right?
I agree.
Is it as easy as that for now, and then we can...
I think so, and even like this, the use schedule, I think this would be a great thing to throw on there.
That, that's under, falls under the plan, town plan, though.
The zoning code and everything is on the site, you can download it, but it's not, you gotta fish for it.
You have to fish for it, and people ask me...
They haven't updated the website yet. Website needs, yeah.
It's, um... It's painful to try to find stuff.
I know.
But the use schedule is something that comes up a lot with my job, and it would be just, be nice to be able to send somebody somewhere.
Is that, the, so the application is online?
On our, on, on our website that I...
Yeah, on the ZBA site, on the ZBA page of the town's site.
All forms, forms, applications, instructions, all that.
Is the use schedule...
Yeah, why not a PDF of the use schedule, along with the, that's the table of uses and the other page that has all the setbacks on it?
Yeah, the setbacks are huge, too.
Yeah, I can just make a copy and...
I'll make a note, and I'll maybe pull up together a PDF for you.
Okay.
And we can, can you post that online? Do we have to get somebody else to do it?
Yes, I haven't gone to that part of the website in a while, but...
The application refers to the table of uses as well, so we could have a link to that, that's a good idea, I think.
I think it just comes up a lot.
Yeah.
One of the first questions.
You can admit it, we lose our tables a lot when you find, find a place to find them.
No, not me, I know where they are.
You have it memorized, it's on your, not on your phone.
I've got a PDF on my desktop.
Got a picture of it, framed in your living room. All right. I think that's it. You would ask me about a letter, Patty, we'll discuss that offline.
Yeah.
After the meeting, okay?
Sure.
Guys can stick around for a few minutes after, I appreciate it.
Sure.
After the hearing.
Okay.
I'll just take off without anything else.
Is it just ball pate tonight?
Any other items that...
Real, real quick, this didn't just, this, this just didn't get in the agenda. I got it after I put the packets together. So, the, it's just, it's from Mike Farrell, the, you know, Pin Cano, the block manager. Town report is due November 15th, so I will do that, send it out. Basically, it's Mellow and the 40B with a year's worth of continuation dates, that's all that's, we, we have a, so it's anything that happened June 30.
Oh, we did a little more than that.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did the organ company.
It's one of the busiest years.
We did the organ company, so it's July 1 of 17, 17 to June 30 of '18.
Well, that was my point about the budget, that we're still ahead, even though we really only had, we had very few hearings, actually.
Right.
And they, and when they keep getting continued, it gets more expensive to...
Because we had a 40B fee, which is, which is $2,000, and that's like 10 accessory apartment hearings.
Yeah, right.
So...
All right, so any other business?
Nope.
No? Anybody else? Or do I hear a motion to close the business meeting?
Still moved?
Thank you. Second?
Gina's here.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close none, the business meeting is closed. We can roll right into our hearings, I think, so.
Hoping it continues.
Let's go with ball pate, ball pate first, yeah. So, can I have the folks from 25 Ball Pate come on up?
Are these people, are these people, if anybody's here for Mellow because of that I go...
Oh, yeah. Is anybody here for the Mellow hearing tonight to, okay, it's, it's going to be continued, so anybody watching at home or anybody in the audience...
You didn't?
That, that hearing is gonna be continued until next year, so when we're done with this hearing, we're gonna open and continue that, so.
Patty, I can...
I'll grab the little one.
Last time I was here, there was an easel on my wheel.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you were bringing one.
Yeah, I could just use a chair, that's fine.
No, 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 no. Nope.
You could bring it.
It's small, but it should be fine.
Okay.
Oh, there's a different one. Yeah, lots of times someone should have come and stick it in.
Oh, really?
Look.
You'll be legal at it. You like this?
Sure.
You don't have to.
Oh, I'm ready. I'm...
Okay, okay to get started?
Yeah, well, first, let me just officially open the meeting for 25 Ball Pate Road, and I'll go ahead and introduce everybody first, so, my name is Jeff Moore, I'm the acting chair tonight. Our chairman, Shawn Dean, is traveling out of, out of town. Dave Quish, Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, and Paul Shillen are all members of the acting on your hearing tonight, so we've got a full board of five. If you guys would like to just give us a presentation on what it is you're doing and what you're here for, and then we'll follow it up with questions from the board and see if anybody in the audience has any questions, so. With that, take it away, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Do you want me to read this legal?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Gina, please. We need to read the legal ad, so, go ahead.
Mine, but mine doesn't forget.
Yeah, I know.
A public hearing will be held on October 9th, 2018, at 7:30 PM at the Georgetown Town Hall, 3rd floor meeting room, for an application filed by owner applicants Leo F. Ryan and Linda A. Ryan of 25 Ball Pate Road, Georgetown, Mass, located in the RC District and identified on Assistant Map 5, Lot 15. The applicants are requesting to construct in addition to a single-family dwelling for an accessory apartment, which requires a special permit under MGL Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter 165, Sections 9 through 11, 69, and 74 through 79. Do I have to read this website piece?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I might as well, go ahead.
Did you say yes, Patty?
Yeah.
Is that new?
Yeah, it is.
Also found on the websites for Massachusetts newspapers, publishers, associations, N-M-N-P-A, masspublicnotices.org, ZBA File Number 19-02.
Very good, thank you. And I neglected to introduce Patty Gattari, who's our clerk, and you've probably already met through the application process, so, for the record, Patty's here. So, with that, welcome.
All right, thank you.
Introduce yourselves if you don't mind, and go right ahead.
My name is Ray Gertner, I'm the architect for the applicants that are here tonight, Linda and Leo Ryan and their son Patrick. We're here tonight seeking a special permit for an accessory apartment addition to their main house. The intent, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the intent is that Mom and Dad are gonna move into the in-law apartment, and young Patrick and his young family are gonna move into the main house. So, part of the requirements of the town are that you can have an accessory apartment up to 700 square feet or 33% of the primary dwelling. We did our calculations, I just tried to graphically show on, on the floor plans here, everything shaded in gray, our areas excluded. The, the living area of the house is described as, as all the living, cooking areas of the house, not including closets, bathrooms, bedroom, uh, not bedrooms, but closets, bathrooms, garage, storage areas as such. So, the gray, this is the main house here, this is the addition up here, so we'll talk about the existing house first. All the area in white is included in the living floor area, all the areas shaded out are not included. So, we've calculated a total of 3,554 gross square feet of the existing house. Of that area, there is 2,233 square feet of living floor area. 33% of that area, there's 736.89 square feet, I'll call it 737 square feet. The addition that we're proposing is 720 square feet of living area. And the same thing applies to the accessory apartment. This is the addition here, and all, all floor plans, the gray areas are excluded areas, and the, the open areas are the areas that are included in that 720 square feet. Talk about the addition itself a little bit, this is the main house, which faces Ball Pate Street, Ball Pate Road, and what the intent was, was to keep, keep the addition sort of to the rear of the main house, so we have it actually coming out the very back end of the main house, and we also kicked it back about 20 degrees off of the main house. This does a couple things for us. Number one, it helps us keep it from the setbacks, so we didn't have to approach upon these side setbacks, and it takes the, a little bit of importance away from the addition, keeping the main house perpendicular to the street, and particularly the main entrance. The other thing that we're trying to do with this is the main entrance into the, the accessory apartment is at the lower level, and you actually come underneath a, a bridgeway, if you will, where this is open to the backyard, and the entrance is set back, again, off at an angle, so it's kind of obscure it from the street. In fact, it will, if I go to the elevations, the, the main entrance to the accessory apartment is really there, which is set back pretty much in shade, and set back from the face of not only the addition, but set way back from the face of the main house. So, that was a way of just trying to keep, keep it less important, not try to call it, we didn't wanna have two entrances, two main entrances to the, to the house, so that maintains the importance in the entry of the existing house here. The addition is just basically a, an oversized one-story garage on the first floor with a stairway entrance up to the accessory apartment, which is basically up in this area here. Side view, looking from this side here is the addition, and then in the background, you can see the existing house. Two car, two garage doors on the existing garage, one door on the, on the new garage. From the back of the house, we wrap around, we have a screen porch coming off the back, which serves for both the, the in-law apartment and the, in the primary dwelling, the screen porch area here, with a rebuilt deck on the back of the house. So, the, the accessory apartment is, is limited to that area here. It's less, the height is less than the existing house, the existing house is just slightly below the maximum building, allowable building height within the zoning, and the new addition is, is less than that. Based on that, if you have any questions?
And Ray was nice, so, coming from the board's information, Ray was nice enough to, this was, like, like presented on the easel, he basically had two sheets, and it was what you had to read, so he, he, what he did was he separated it out on separate sheets, so it'd be easier for you to read, because if you look at that first page, it's...
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
He's one of the only architects.
Individual drawings of each one of these.
He's one of the few architects that still does it by hand.
I liked the executive summary page myself, because I had to flip through.
Yeah, it's actually more unique than one page by page, I like this.
Well done. Thank you, Patty. Are they, do anybody have any questions?
So, it's...
Paul's mulling through.
It's actually set down lower, is the existing a little bit higher? I'm trying to...
Well, not necessarily. On the back of the house, it's very level gray.
Okay.
On the front of the house, you come up the driveway here, and it does sort of, the gray, there's a retaining wall right here, the gray does sort of rise up a little higher to the first floor.
Okay.
So, the, the new addition is, is based off the elevation of the existing garage and the new garage, that's all, that way elevation.
Slabs, slabs of each, both garages will be at the same elevation.
Same low.
If, if the, the addition may be slightly lower, if, if anything, four to six inches, that's it.
So, you're really, for all intents and purposes, you're living on a second floor above a garage?
Above a garage, that is correct.
All right, I just wanted to understand that. Okay, thank you.
I was a little confused with the basement floor foyer breezeway area coming in.
Yeah.
Because on the drawings, it's just sort of a void there.
Yeah.
It is connected.
It is connected at the second floor level.
Not that it really matters, but I was...
At the second floor level is where the connection is.
Connection is clear up there, but down below, you have an entrance.
Below, it's all been through here, so there's not a connection, if you will, down below. It's connected, you see the dotted lines here, if you can see that far, that's where the, the building is connected.
There's a door here.
No, these are dotted, that's the second floor. This is, this is over here, so you could technically run into the backyard.
No, there's a door showing on the other plan, though. If you look at the front face of the building, you just had it up there a minute ago with the...
In perspective, you will see...
There's a door right there, right there.
But between the house and the accessory, there's...
So that door that you see, which is set way back, is this door in plan, right?
You actually can't see through to the backyard.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's fully connected to the house, you're not building it yet. I mean, obviously it is from the second floor.
It is, right, but we have it open. The idea was that we didn't want to have to walk all the way around to the backyard. So we have a way of coming through from the driveway right to the backyard.
Got it.
That's why I asked.
So what is that, concrete floor there, that you just walk right through?
It'll be probably papers.
All right, got it. So it's sort of not an archway, but sort of a breezeway?
Correct.
Oh, yes, that's correct. Okay, got it. I see, okay. I was looking at this backwards, that was part of my problem.
So can you repeat for me, who lives there now?
I live here now with my wife and it's just the two of us, big house for the two of us.
So you're moving to the addition?
Correct.
And your son?
My son Patrick.
Moving to the main house?
Correct, with his young family.
Okay, so it's almost the reverse of the existing. I mean, you're building it for them, but it's technically...
Correct. We're getting all the new stuff. He's getting all the stuff that's 25 years old.
Even though they're downsizing by about two-thirds. The one other thing I'd like to point out, if I may, I know in one of the requirements for accessory apartments is that, is that should there be a change in ownership or change in residence of the owner, the special permit and certificate of occupancy for the accessory apartment shall become null and void. The only thing we'd like to add to that, if we may, would be that unless they sell it to their son. So that sale wouldn't affect the null and void of the accessory apartment.
Well, as long as you're both residing there.
Yes, right. The reason, we were gonna put it in his name and just, you know, sell it to him and have him build it. But I have two other children. I have to make it equitable for them, I just haven't done it yet. I'm not sure how. I want to let them fight about it later. The intent is for my wife and I to live our life, the rest of our life there. I love the golf course, she loves her garden, we want to be near our grandchildren. And it's, he wants to come back to Georgetown and raise his family. So that's basically the impetus to do something like this.
Sounds like a trip to Bermuda.
I'm not 100% sure if we can put a condition in that allows for the permit to continue with the change of ownership is in the bylaw.
Honestly, we did that once.
I'm not 100% sure how to draft it without the advice of legal counsel. The reason it's in there is because when there's a change of owner, even if maybe the, either party moves out, so to speak.
Not to rent it.
The owner has been to this hearing and understands the requirements of the accessory apartment. We don't see a lot of people come back in to reapply, which leads us to believe there's a lot of rental property going on that technically probably shouldn't be, you know, non-relatives and what have you. But the idea is, and I, you know, I think there's a lot of the marks here, we got to make sure that it's not, you're maintaining the single-family characteristics of the house and the neighborhood and that you're not having renters coming in and out and adding a lot of traffic and all these other things that are important to the neighborhood, which is why that bylaw isn't in there. I fully understand what you're asking for, it's not any reason...
However, we were told that there was a precedence for this in the past. I think that's correct, did you tell me that?
Well, when you first came in, you were going to, I think you were going to...
Yeah, we've been through a number of scenarios, but let me, can I ask a question? The procedure then, if it was granted and just the way it is, I would reapply or my son would reapply?
The owner would have to reapply, that'd be the worst case.
Couldn't we do something where, can we wave a fee? I mean, he's already been here.
I'm wondering if we could just draft, I have to think about it, but maybe you can draft?
Can, we can...
If there's, you haven't moved in yet, that's...
I'd like to think about it. I don't know, it says come back for a new special permit, but I'm wondering if they could come back for a finding at a business meeting.
Something like, that's what I was thinking.
But you'd still have to, I think ask.
But that's standard, correct me if I'm wrong Jeff, that's standard. When you have an accessory apartment, if I have a single-family home with an accessory apartment and I decide to move to Florida and bring my folks with me, when I sell that house, if the person buying the house wants their parents to live in that accessory apartment, they have to come to zoning and ask for the same relief?
Correct.
Without going through the rigor of this.
Right.
It's hard, existing, they just ask for the continued...
There would generally be plans to show the board at that time, might be 15 years from now, they want to just kind of reevaluate it. It's not unreasonably withheld, but they kind of have to go through the same process. But the idea of a finding is...
I'm not opposed to... Oh yeah, I've got the originals.
It's within the next year or something, that's why I feel like if we could...
I totally understand the...
It could still make them pay a whole nother permit fee.
If John were here, he would give us language in a minute, I think.
It's a request, so perhaps you could think about it?
I think the worst case is, as Patty mentioned, you could apply for a finding, which means you don't have to go through the full hearing. You come to the board, explain what's going on, and do we need a special permit?
Yeah.
That way you don't...
The board would make a finding whether you need to have a full hearing or not.
And then you can just go by...
This is in the future.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
I'm not...
I was just saying, hey, we're here, why just, that was just changed, no one moved anywhere, nothing else. This was granted on September 17th.
I'd rather that, because to me, the special permit is granted to the owner of record. And it doesn't matter who is the owner, I'd rather not go that path.
You would have to find that it's a substantial change. In a substantial change, you'd need, they'd need to file an application with a full hearing.
Sure.
But not, it would just be fine.
Perfect sense, I just, I hate to put them through anything, but just, you know, for procedure and keeping our bylaw intact.
I think we had one that put their property in trust once.
We had one that...
You know, they're just putting the whole thing into a trust, which is very common. It's a similar situation, nobody, nothing changed, they just put it in a trust and they come in, you know, do the same thing. So I'm not sure about that one, let's think about it.
So is there a new septic going in?
There is, yeah. I have, I've already done the perk and all that and I have a, actually I gotta go and see if... I plan on putting that in regardless of the result, and I plan on doing that this fall. So I already have a design and everything.
You've already been through the Board of Health and all that?
I have, yes, yeah.
I think there's a property in there. Patty, would you like me to read the exhibits?
Yes, please.
All right. While we're looking at these plans, Exhibit A is plot plan, plot of land surveyed by Haze Engineering, stamped by Peter Oberon, dated 1718. Exhibit B, Sheet A1, all proposed plans. One sheet drawn and stamped by Raymond T. Gertin. T. Gertin, I'm sorry, architect, dated 20218. Exhibit C, Sheet A2, all exterior elevations drawn and stamped by Raymond T. Gertin, architect dated 20218. Exhibit D, existing floor plan. All below plans, thank you, drawn by Raymond T. Gertin, of Ipswich, Mass. Exhibit E, existing second floor plan. Exhibit F, existing third floor plan. Exhibit G, existing ground floor plan. Exhibit H, proposed first floor plan. Exhibit I, proposed ground floor plan. Exhibit J, proposed second floor plan. Exhibit K, proposed third floor plan. Exhibit L, proposed southeast front elevation. Exhibit M, proposed northwest rear elevation. And Exhibit N, proposed west left side elevation.
Do we know if we have a butters?
I was gonna ask, does anybody in the audience have anything they want to add? I don't see you guys sitting there, sure, if you want to introduce yourself and maybe have your address.
I'm David Colson, this is my wife Nancy. We live across the street, by the way.
Oh, good.
And we got a notice in the mail about this. And our main concern was the fact that if this could be changed, the zoning, so it could be rental property, but you addressed that already, I believe.
Right, did you get the last name Patty? I'm sorry, what was your last name?
David Colson, C-O-L-S-O-N.
Great, thank you.
We just moved into Marymount.
Welcome to Georgetown. And also thank you for coming, it's nice that people actually come when they get a letter.
The answer is they're not allowed to rent it. You can in fact rent it to family members if you so choose, that's between you and your family. They can't have non-relative renters living there. So it can't be rental property, so to speak.
And the zoning doesn't change in the neighborhood, right?
No, no, they're getting temporary relief for the structure that they've asked to build. And it's limited in size and scope to accommodate family members who'd like to live together, really. It's a special exemption in the code. And one of the things I did want to mention is that, you know, this is a pretty significant addition, it's very well done. It's not a permanent permit, should it be granted. And if down the road, you know, your son or you guys decide you want to move to Florida or something, you don't have anybody living with you, the risk is on the owner that that permit may or may not get extended down the line. And if you go to sell the property, you might want to think about how you're going to convert that back to a single-family home. And a lot of times, the apartment is kind of set up inside the house without a significant exterior addition. And so that's a little bit easier to contemplate. Somebody finishes off their basement and then they come down the road, well, you know, mom and dad have, you know, lived somewhere else now and we want to turn that back into a rec room or something. It's a little bit easier to contemplate. This is a pretty significant job and just so that you realize that, you know, it's not a permanent thing. So if down the road renting that to another relative is not something you want to contemplate, you know, you need to think about that, or, you know, your son does, or...
My daughter, my daughter...
Your daughter, I'm sorry.
Well, my son will, my daughter wants to move in there.
Well, there you go.
Not a lot of charging your sister rent in your pants.
It comes up sometimes too, when you go to sell down the road, you know, and all of a sudden Gina knows it's an accessory and the people buy it, oh, I have an accessory. They don't realize that, well, the risk is on them. And they need to understand what the limitations are, because sometimes, you know, buyers might not, until it gets explained to them.
They can look at, for example, the Assessor's Field Card and the notes on the Assessor's Field Card, it'll say in-law, because that's what Saul went in. But in the section, another section of the Field Card, it doesn't say ZBA permit, there's no permit.
There's no permit, right, understood.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So the structure will be as noted there, but it's only allowed to be a two-residence household, relative only for the time period of this owner. And then if it changes ownership, they have to come back and get permission to do the same. But it's still that size addition.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else? You know, I was just reviewing the bylaw. I don't think, without having town council here, that we can necessarily give relief on the ownership issue easily. And I don't think we want to draft a permit. That is not legally correct, because then the risk is on you guys, that it's not right. And I don't know that we want to grant exemptions. You know, I completely understand what you're doing, what you're asking, it's reasonable. But again, I don't think the risk is that big of a deal to come back. You could apply for, how far down the road are you...
I would tend to agree, and it could be next year, it could be 10 years from now. But I do have to make it equitable for all three of my children, so that's the only...
I think the worst case would be that if it does change ownership, then you come on in and if everybody's still living there and it's going fine, you just come in and ask for a finding, worst case.
Yeah, and again, I don't think that anyone... Correct, I would tend to agree.
And that's what I was thinking, if it's the same three, we know they all attended this meeting. So they could come in as a group and ask for a finding. And if I'm on the board, no brainer, really. You know, it might be, if we're all on the board, then it's probably pretty easy. If it's new people, it might be a little different. So do it sooner than later.
I'll probably still be here.
Well, that's a good thing.
So the conditions would be, I guess it's worth discussing before there's a motion. The condition would be that it needs to be occupied by relatives, you already said. You'd have to reapply for a special permit with a change of ownership or change in occupancy by the owner, either permanent occupancy, you're the owner and you leave permanently another state, then they would have to come back and reapply. It's got to be inspected by the building inspector. And you, these are the final plans, as far as you know?
Design plan.
The design.
Okay, the final design. Nothing substantially can change from the plans that you've submitted here, material. Obviously, you've got a lot of detail to work out construction plans. The design plans aren't going to, if they've changed materially in the eyes of the building inspector, you might send you back here for some reason, but that's not usually going to happen, so...
And the Board of Health is all set, they're doing a new, whole new...
Complete septic, yes.
Do we have a motion on the special permit?
I'd like to make the motion to grant the accessory apartment addition for 25 Ballpate Road. The motion is to, do we have a second?
Second?
No, you gotta read the whole thing.
Oh, I have to read the whole thing? Oh my gosh, see, I'm a little rusty, sorry.
Can I ask one question before we go? Is it worth mentioning the square foot area proposed in this? Because I know typically it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So the motion to, I'd like to make a motion to grant a special permit to Leo Ryan and Linda Ryan, owners of 25 Ballpate Road, Georgetown, Mass., located in the RC District and identified on Assessor's Map 5, Lot 15, to construct in addition to a single-family dwelling for an accessory apartment pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter 165, Sections 9 through 11, 69, and 74 through 79. The accessory apartment addition shall be 720 square feet. It will have the following conditions. The accessory apartment be occupied by relatives of the owner only, not to be used as a rental property, and the primary dwelling must be owner-occupied per bylaw, Chapter 165, Section 69B. If the house is sold, transferred, or if there is any change in residence of the owner, the special permit lapses and the new owner must apply to the board for a new special permit. The apartment shall be inspected by the building inspector before occupancy per Chapter 165, Section 69D. And number four be built per plan submitted at the hearing marked as Exhibits A through H.
N, sorry.
Oh, N.
Am I bad writing?
You know. Thank you. A through N. Further move that the board found that the application met zoning bylaws, Chapter 165 through 79, A through D, in that the application is desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and will not overload any public water or other municipal services so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare, and will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, and it will not cause an excess of that particular use which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood.
Is it seconded? Dave, seconded?
Sir, can I just ask a question?
So seconded, but yeah, discussion.
I was just listening to what you were reading, the owner of the, I forget what the wording, the owner of the primary must be in the primary dwelling. Do we need to clarify that since we know that that won't be true? Where is it, where is it?
Must be owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied.
Of the primary dwelling, it says.
Right, let's say that, I always put a question...
That's why you guys are rental property and the primary dwelling must be owner-occupied.
And the primary dwelling must be owner-occupied. So the owner is technically the, the primary dwelling is the bigger building. So I'm just wondering if we need to make a statement of that in our decision, since we already know.
Make a friendly amendment to cross out the word primary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Good catch.
Nice catch. Committee was listening.
Second again?
So we'll read, and the dwelling must be owner-occupied per bylaw, okay? Thank you, Sean. All right, is there any other discussion on that?
Nope.
So do we vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and so that carries unanimously. So you have your special permit, and let me just say that there's a 20-day appeal period. Following 14 days, the clerk has to file a written decision with the town clerk. And a person who exercises a right under an appealed special permit or variance does so at their own risk. So you don't want to take too much action until the appeal period expires 20 days after Patty files your permit, so about a month or so or less, okay?
Great.
So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your project.
I will.
Nice job on that.
I'll read your decision.
Okay, great, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
You can just leave it there.
Sure?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, we did.
Are we all done? So you're motion to close the hearing for playing Ballpate?
You can't move in second.
The motion to adjourn?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, right, good point.
Never mind, we're still on with Lynn. We're still on. Let me just get out of this. Okay.
Tell him to reach out. Tell him I said hello.
I will. I will be talking.
All right.
Now, if he's ever looking to move back.
Yeah.
Put it in the board.
Okay.
We gotta do...
Not one trash.
We probably...
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck.
I go up two blocks from there. And Abby live a block away.
Nice. All right, so it's about 8:02. I'd like to reopen the hearing for 203 East Main Street. We have one point of correspondence, so. Dated October 9, 2018, to the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals. Regarding 203 East Main Street, Dear Board Members, I am pleased to report that the applicant has entered into an agreement to purchase an alternative location on Carlton Drive in Georgetown for the Mellow Disposal Corporation. We are now in the due diligence phase of that agreement, during which the applicant's consultants will determine if the alternative location is viable and feasible, and will be, and will determine with the assistance of town staff, the permits and approvals that will be required. Given this alternative, do not wish to take up the board's, the hear, take up the hearing board's time discussing the pending East Main Street application, as the application may become moot. Therefore, the applicant requests a continuance of the pending 203 East Main Street hearing until the board's meeting of January 8, 2019. I'm hoping Nancy. At which time, we will have completed the due diligence review and permitting evaluation of the alternative location. In the event that there is an issue with a quorum of board members able to act on the 203 East Main Street application due to the continuance, the applicant understands that the risk is borne by the applicant. I understand that we do not need to be present at this evening's meeting. Thank you for your consideration. Very truly yours, Nancy S. McGann, on behalf of Mellow. So we need to move to continue that hearing to the 8th of January without discussion on the hearing, but we can talk about this letter if we, if we need to, so.
I would like to make a motion to approve the continuance to January 8, 2019, on behalf, from Nancy McCain, on behalf of Jay Mellow and Mellow Corp.
For 203 East Main Street.
For 203 East Main Street.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Paul? We'll go with Paul.
Nice.
Tie goes to the guy sitting next to me, yeah. So do we have any discussion on it? The issue of the, you're going to stand on this, by the way.
Yeah.
The issue of the quorum is something I discussed with Nancy today, because I didn't want this board or the town to be at risk of not having a quorum and having, you know, a constructive grant or something, because this has been going on for a long time. We're down to four members who are now even eligible to sit at this point, and I had suggested a withdrawal without prejudice, and then they could reopen at any time in the future. And that way, we could reset the board and not have to have this issue. There are reasons why they would like to keep this open. Not the least of which has to do with the state and the DEP requirements that they are continually pursuing, you know, an improvement over there. And by leaving this open, that, that's part of it, and that made sense to me. So I had her, as you heard, specifically put in here that they're acknowledging that if there's any issue with, with a quorum, that the risk is on them, and then they would have to restart with a new hearing at that point, whether that's only four people available or, or what have you. So this, if that makes sense to everybody. So with that, are there any other questions about, about this at all?
No, I agree. I think they're taking the right action.
Now, this could also be continued beyond January, but they're obviously not going to have what they need done in the next two months, so they didn't want to have to keep doing this month after month. So they're moving it to January. If we need to go further out at that point in time, we can deal with it then, so.
And so they're allowed to continue with business as they currently have it, without being in violation of the DEP?
That is up to them. That's...
That's between them and the DEP.
What the DEP requires them to do while they're pursuing the upgrades that they're required to make is up to them in the DEP.
So they wouldn't, they could make an up...
They were not seeking relief from us in relation to the improvements. They were seeking it for other reasons, such as tonnage and special permits and variances and all that stuff.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. So if they just did the upgrades to the existing structures, then it wouldn't have had to come before us. Right.
Well, this, this hearing is still ongoing, technically. We're just continuing it. This does not give them any relief with the DEP, which I think is what your question was. Our continuing this doesn't give them...
I'm just wondering if they need, if they need to make upgrades to the current facility while they're still pursuing...
The DEP will advise them as to what needs to be done.
So they might have to come back to us for their current structures.
But they would not, I don't think they would have to necessarily come back to us for a temporary enclosure. I don't know.
Okay, got it. Okay, okay. I was just curious.
But it's a good question, because we were talking about that earlier.
Okay, that's fair. I'm okay with this.
Probably a question for town council.